They said five minutes, but I don't see this coming up.
We're going to call the Tuesday, February 21st, 2023 Tom Water City Council Meeting to Order. Welcome everyone this evening. So with that, we will start with roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
Present.
She has her thing muted.
Present.
Oh, we can't hear you, Leeta.
Angela, can you hear me?
So she's present. Let's see if she can come back in. Can you reboot and come back in?
Everyone can hear me on Zoom except you.
Can't hear. Okay, so go ahead.
Okay, Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Oh, we have problem with sound. Okay, sorry if we can get a technician to work on this while we're moving the meeting. Okay, all right. And I think I just lost my. Okay. Are we still on? No. Sorry, we're having technical difficulties. There we go. Okay, so perfect. All right, we'll continue with the roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Joan Cathy.
She's excused this evening.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout. Councilmember Michael Althouser. Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Charlie Schneider.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
And I am present. Thank you, everyone. With that, we will go ahead and do the flag salute. So if you will follow me. All right. Next item is proclamation for Black History Month, and Councilmember Agabe will be reading that.
Oh, proclamation, whereas the city of Tom Water probably embraces the cultural diversity of our community and harvests and honors organizations, families, and individuals of African-American descent in appreciation of their invaluable contribution that continue to enrich our city and unite and sustain us as a community. And whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted Black scholar and son of former slaves, founded Association for the Study of African-American Life and History and initiated Negro history work in 1926 to encourage the study of African-American history. In 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black people in American history, advance discourse of civil rights and to strengthen families, communities, and the nations. Since 1976, every American president has designated February as Black History Month and does a specific theme. And whereas the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History identified 2023 Black History Month theme, Black resistance, and explores how African-Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppression in our forms, especially the Rashid terrorism of lynching, Rashid programs, and police killings since the nation's earliest days. And whereas observing Black History Month provides opportunity to gain a deeper understanding of African-American history and acknowledges the centuries of struggle for equity and freedom, and whereas contribution of African-Americans are central to society, including civic, economics, professional, medical, scientific, military, and artistic excellence. And whereas Tom Water was settled by George Bush and his family, which was a prominent member of the 1845 Settlement Party, a frontiersman and successful farmer who helped establish present-day Tom Water and was the first Black settler to receive a land grant in Washington territory. Near the Earl, Debbie Sullivan, mayor of the city of Tom Water, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2023, Black History Month. And because of the disparities that continue to plague our society, she calls upon the people of the city of Tom Water to continue to eliminate the barriers of equality, recognize and raise their voices to bring about lasting systemic and societal change against racism. Signed in the city of Tom Water, Washington, and recognized on this 21st day of February in the year 2023.
Thank you. And we have representatives from the Fred U. Harris Lodge, number 70 Mason Center. And I'm going to first bring, present you with the proclamation, and then I'll have you say a few words. So first, I'm going to check. Councilmember Dahlhoff and Councilmember Jefferson, can you hear?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. I want to make sure you were on.
Thank you, Mayor.
So there you go. And I have some gifts for you. Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And here's for the rest of the individuals in your party. Thank you very much.
Good evening. First of all, always thank God. I thank the Almighty for these, this day of recognition. Also, Mayor Sullivan, council members, ladies and gentlemen, chief. This is an honor from Fred U. Harris Lodge. First let me introduce myself. My name is Melvin Butler. I'm the worshipful master for Fred U. Harris Lodge, number 70. And this is a privilege. I really, really humble and accept this proclamation on behalf of myself, the brothers of Fred U. Harris Lodge, and lots of brothers and sisters in the Black community. And thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
With that said, I just wanted to say a few words of, of course, we know that Black History Month is a must to challenge all of us to expand our knowledge of the many contributions, contributions made by Black people in every facet of the American experience. We now know of Dr. Carter G. Woods, who formed Negro History Month. But did you know that Dr. Woods dedicated his life to the pursuit and the education of the nation, of the accomplishment and achievements of Black Americans? Dr. Woods being an educated historian, authored over 200 books and papers about Black history. He founded the Associated Publishers Incorporated in 1829 to publish his own works and the works of other marginalized authors because the major publishing companies at the time showed no interest in producing serious work on the topic. AP Incorporated operated until 2005, when it closed its door. Gerald Ford, the 38th President of the United States, when he, in 1976, extended the recognition to be a week-long event called upon the nation to, quote, seize the opportunity to honor the often neglected accomplishment of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Indeed, the city of Tom Water exists due to the contribution of a man of mixed race but still considered a Negro, George Bush, and his family. Some of you well know of him. If the citizens of Tom Water are unaware, let this be an opportunity to learn of Mr. Bush. In that vein, may we resolve as this proclamation is not just a recognition of Black History Month, but a commitment to gaining knowledge of the sacrifices, contributions, and experience of Black Americans beyond the limited information to which we are exposed. When we learn of other cultures and history, it creates empathy and better understanding and often solidarity. We celebrate Black History Month in this country. As we celebrate, may we recognize the greatness of America as come to be due to the accomplishment and sacrifices of its many citizens from the various ethnics and cultural groups. And may God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming this evening. Next item on our agenda is a consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
We also have public comment.
Oh, sorry. Ah, yes, I. Um, I wrote notes over that part, sorry. We have two people in council. Do we have any online signed up?
We don't.
Okay, so the end, uh, so who I have on, signed up is Ray Gleason. And if you can come to the podium and then go ahead and three minutes for public comments.
I'd like to request a future agenda. I guess that would be my first statement. Glad that this has started talking somewhat about the Bush family. I'm an arborist and forest scientist. I've done, a lot of my work has been taking care of George and Isabella Bush's heritage. The reason I'm approaching this is I have, please give me a little bit of, I have speaking deficit. In my recent dealings, I have noted that where George and Isabella Bush's headstone is currently, their headstone has been fractured in the past as well as those around them. That is, in doing research, as I, I had never done that previous to this. There is trees nearby that had, I, I'd noted that they're becoming more and more, there's a lot of fungus on them, things like that. I asked the city of Tom Water to do inspections. And before my, before I would personally inspect them, the city of Tom Water did classify that, had a consulting arborist come out and considered it a, a level one risk inspection. That means that they merely inspected it from the ground and that it posed a moderate rating, a consensus of failure somewhat likely. I disagree. That, there's a tree that had, a Douglas fir tree that has previously failed. That failure caused significant decay. The fruiting bodies are currently existing, and there are multiple epocormic leaders that are greater than 40 feet tall and are weakly attached. They are likely to fail currently. A level two or level three inspection would have been more appropriate. That, when that top failed, that is what broke George and Isabella's headstone, as well as many of their family's headstones. I have a photograph here. I would appreciate being able to pass it off to the council. I don't know how to do that. That, that is Mazama. Mazama was William Owen Bush's wife. He was on our first legislature. I guess I step ahead in my statement that as respect to the citizens of Tom Water and the citizens of the state of Washington, I, I believe it's our, our responsibility to be caring about the past for our future generations. I'm very, I'm not impressed. Knowing that in my further research and myself donating my time, 31 years ago, that headstone was fixed. That means that that tree failed more than 31 years ago. The pieces of those headstones were carried by children to the Mills and Mills Cemetery near next door. That was somebody's donating, children donating their time. Those children could have taken those and thrown those away.
So we can get back with you on that?
Okay, can I ask for, again, a word, the public? This matters. Does the public need to collect donations in order to preserve history? Is that what we need at this time? Because this is city property. Where does this need to be taken to a state level or federal?
Thank you.
That's what I asked.
Thank you. All right. Reginald Coffey? Coffey?
Looks like that on the agenda today that you're going to take up the issue of the Kingwood Apartment Complex and the tax exemption. So is this the time to address that, or would that be later?
You, you can make three-minute public comment on that, yes.
Well, I sent the council members an email earlier today.
Yes, we have that.
I don't want to belabor the concern that I have, other than to say that I think that it needs to be reexamined in terms of the viability of that tax exemption. And I would like to have contact with the council outside of the meeting as to how the future addressing of affordable housing is addressed by the city. Because I don't think that, according to TMC 3.30, the way that that's written, that it adequately addresses that problem. That's it.
Thank you very much. All right. Great topics, and they will be on our list. Is there anyone else that is here this evening that has not signed up for public comment but wishes to do so? All right, with that, now we will move to the consent agenda item. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item?
So moved?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Althouser, seconded by Councilmember Schneider. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? Okay, the motion passes. And with that, we've approved council minutes from February 7th, payment vouchers, Resolution R. 2023-006, the city logo, inter-local agreement with two regional housing council, cities of Lacey, Tom Water, and Yelm for regional housing council structure. The Provider Agreement for SG, SCJ Alliance for Capitol Boulevard, Israel Road to M Street Design Amendment 1, contract approval for the 12-year multi-tax exemption for Kingwood Apartments, real estate purchase and sale agreement for DJ Properties, 2 LLC, for 116 Lee Street and 109 Ruby Street Southeast, lease agreements for 116 Lee Street, site lease agreement with Dish Wireless for the airport reservoir, lease payment for allocation agreement with Dish Wireless for the airport reservoir, and appointment of the Blake Chard for Civil Service Commission and Dave Nekandry for the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District Board Director. So with that, do, was.
May I make a point of personal privilege?
Yes.
I, I just wanted to take 30 seconds to just thank you for your comments, Reginald. I'm as chair of the General Government Committee. I think it is probably appropriate that maybe in the future we schedule a work session for our committee to kind of look into the merits of those things. We passed both those tax exemptions, really before the pandemic and really before the housing crisis really hit its peak. In particular, we have an eight-year tax exemption that I think might warrant looking at. Rents were 45 to 50% lower just five years ago. So I think it would behoove the committee to take a look at that and to have a conversation about that. So I, I'm hoping that we can add that to the schedule in the coming weeks, and we can send you notice about that meeting as well. So I just wanted to take that point of personal privilege to thank you for his comment and for his email.
Yeah, and Michael and Councilmember Althouser and Councilmember Kathy both serve on our regional housing authority. And so this is discussion that is continually being talked about, so. All right, so with that, we are now moving, and again, I didn't see Blake Chard here this evening. I wasn't sure if he was going to show. All right, now we're going to move to council consideration as a preliminary docket for 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendments, and Brad Mudrud. And I believe you're going to be also introducing a new staff member.
Thank you, Mayor and council. First, before I begin, I would like to introduce our new planner, who is now responsible for the entire department. Erica Smith Erickson has joined us officially as of Thursday. And we're very, 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 very happy that she's with us, and I'm sure she will be talking with you shortly.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm just kidding.
Erica, we, we apologize in advance for Brad's dry sense of humor.
They apologize a lot. All right. The actual reason I'm here, in addition to introducing Erica, is that we are now at the time of the year for approval of the preliminary docket for the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. So this year is an abbreviated version of past preliminary dockets, so this shouldn't take very long. But just to refresh everyone's memory, according to city code, we have a process by which every comprehensive plan amendment, that's a text or a map amendment to the comprehensive plan or any of the documents, goes through two-part process. The first is a preliminary docket, which happens at the beginning of the year, and the planning commission reviews, makes a recommendation that goes to the council. The, the purpose of the preliminary docket is basically to set the agenda for council and for staff review of all the, all the comprehensive plan amendments for the year. Staff then goes away, reviews those particular amendments, and then comes back in the late summer with the final docket in order to then have the full public process through the planning commission and the council. And that results in an approval of an ordinance. For this year, there are two public text amendments that are on the docket. The first is the capital facilities plan update, and the second is the old Highway 9 corridor plan. Just as a note, council approved last year an ordinance that suspended the comprehensive plan annual amendment cycle with the exception of some city-sponsored amendments, so we can devote the energies for this to the full update process, which will be providing a update shortly to the council on where we are in that. The first update is, that's on the docket, is the capital facilities plan update. It's a six-year plan. This is a very important aspect of our comprehensive plan because it is essentially where the council is putting the money to enact the policies and actions that are found in the comprehensive plan. Capital facilities plans are considered by the council every other year, alternate years from your regular budgeting process. And the capital facilities plan will cover water, sewer, stormwater, transportation, parks and recreation, and city facilities like City Hall and the library. The old Highway 99 corridor plan is a plan that has been developed through our Transportation and Engineering Department that we would like to have as part of the comprehensive plan, and this is the part that, this is the process by which we do this. So we will be including that as part of the packet. As you're probably aware, the, the plan is a multimodal plan that covers all the aspects of the corridor from land use, transportation, environmental considerations, and basically lays out future projects for improvements of that area. The recommendation from both the General Government Committee and the Planning Commission is that both of these items go forward as part of the final docket. And as part of this process, staff is asking that the council approve the preliminary docket to go forward. And then staff will prepare the final docket amendments for review and approval by council, starting with the planning commission in July of this year. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions from council? Councilmembers for that.
So we will be doing the full comprehensive plan, then, is that the, the cap cities or capital facilities is the one that we'll be working on, then?
The capital.
Starting in July?
Yes, there, I anticipate there will be, the Public Works Committee will probably be taking up parts of that plan as part of the briefings, probably starting in June. I'll work with Brandon on their schedule. But the intent is to start the planning commission, the formal adoption of the ordinance process at the end of July.
Any other questions? Oh, Councilmember Althouser?
I, I don't have a question. I was, I was going to make a motion. It would suffice it to say just that this was a unanimous recommendation from the General Government Committee. And, you know, we, we all know that these, these briefings are short before council, but they represent hours and hours of work by staff, both that has already happened and then hours and hours that is, that is yet to come. As this is sort of the preliminary set and really setting that docket. So with that in mind, I, I move that we approve the proposed preliminary docket of 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendments to go forward for the review as part of the final docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments.
This is Leeta, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Althouser, seconded by Councilmember Dahlhoff. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right, so we're going to have another one of those easy meetings, early nights. So we, now we're going to go to committee reports. And we will start off with Councilmember Dahlhoff for Public Health and Safety.
I'll say, Mayor, don't jinx it until after I do my reports. Public Health and Safety met on Valentine's Day, so it's very memorable. We received an update on the K9 program with the new officer and the new dog named Thor, I believe, and scheduling a time for us all to meet the handler and the dog coming up soon. Our next Public Health and Safety Committee meeting will be March 14th. We'll be getting an update regarding Tom Water hopes and having South Sound Behavioral Hospital update. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is General Government Committee. Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee met on February 8th, and we had three items on our agenda, two of which were already passed this evening. One was the Regional Housing Council inter-local agreement. The other one was the preliminary docket, which we just voted upon. The other item that we discussed at that meeting was just an update about the Urban Forestry Management Plan Amendments regarding tree vegetation preservation regulations. We'll be discussing both those items in, in greater detail at our next meeting on March the 8th.
Great, thank you. Next one is Public Works Committee. Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Committee will be meeting on Thursday, February 23rd at 8:00 a.m. And on our agenda, we have the service provider agreement with PBS. And on our agenda, we have the Service Provider Agreement with PBS for the Principal Creek Fish Passage Buryal Removal Project, Amendment 3. We'll be discussing the I-5 Trosper Road, Capitol Boulevard reconfiguration project. And that's, and then the meetings that we had, I was going to say the consent calendar, we had four items that we had addressed before that were on tonight's consent agenda.
Great, thank you. And Budget and Finance Committee has not met since our last meeting. With that, we will move to the Mayor's City Administrator Report. Administrator Don, do you want to go first?
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to highlight, I think everybody has heard that one of our directors, James Torrejo, is leaving us. James and his family are moving back to Oregon. James has been in the role of Administrative Services, which is human resources and fleet and IT and the city clerk and public records and lots of, lots of different functions within risk management within the city organization. James came on board in the middle of COVID. And I, you know, everyone was impacted by COVID, and all of our directors did a phenomenal job sort of navigating their department and helping navigate the organization through COVID. I don't know that anyone was more impacted by all of that than Administrative Services and the folks who have worked in HR with all the issues around COVID and people being here and protecting people and mandates and all those kinds of things. James took the lion's share of that work. And, you know, in addition to COVID, there was just a whole lot of hiring that's happened in the past two years. Just, you know, like everyone else, a tremendous amount of transition. We had new positions. We had contracts that were open, and James finished one of each, police, fire, and Teamsters. But really, you know, I think moved the ball forward for the city in our work around safety and created some staff capacity in his department to help focus on safety and training for employees. In addition to sort of a broader view of training and implementing a learning management system, which we had never had to sort of keep track of what training people need to have and have had, certain departments like police and fire, where it's an essential part of the job. You know, had those systems in place, but the rest of the city didn't. So he was particularly instrumental with that. And then also he did a tremendous amount of work around DEI, around diversity, equity, and inclusion, beginning training for our employees. We actually knew James and had worked with him when he was at the state, and he helped us implement the Tomwater Safe Program. So even before he came to work for us, he was helping to make Tomwater a better place. So I just wanted, while we're here, to say a huge thank you to him and wish him well on his adventures in Oregon, which is where he's from. And so, yeah, huge thank you to him. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. So for my report, I wanted to let everyone know that the Association of Washington Cities has created a new cabinet called the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, and they have 14 districts in which they have city officials representing. And there was 50 applicants apparently for all of these different positions. And I was selected to serve in District 6 on that cabinet, so I will be representing Tomwater. So, which is, I think, a great honor to start up a new cabinet on that particular topic. I also attended the Inner City Transit Authority on February 15th meeting, and we had three presentations. First one was on the 2020, a report on the 2022 Walk and Roll Program, the 2023 procurement work plan, and our, the roadmap to zero emission fleet and how they're working on that and how we're going to get to that zero emissions. One of the reports that we had was that Inner City Transit is now at 74% of pre-COVID levels of service. And taking that into consideration, that it was, they had an increase right before that because the Zero Fair went into effect. And during that time, during Zero Fair, the January ridership increased by 20% and the February ridership increased by 40%. So the fact that we're at 70% of pre-COVID means that we're getting back there, but it still takes a lot to get back to the original ridership that had happened before. We also had a presentation on the Winter Bike Commuter Challenge, which is in February, and they had to have 200, as of that date, they had 273 in people signed up and they had already ridden in the first two weeks 11,000 miles. So that's pretty remarkable of how much, and this is in February, so. And we had a wetter February than before. Also wanted to let everyone know that Walk and Roll Education Center, the new one, that'll be by the new facilities, is going to have an open house from 3:00 to 6:00 on March 7th. And that is my report. So I think I will go to those remote to start with. So Councilmember Dahlhoff, can I start with you?
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much. Out of my six meetings since we last met, I will not belabor the points, but there's two highlights for you regarding LOT, Clean Water Alliance, another acronym, LOT, Lacey Olympia, Tomwater, Thurston County. We had election of officers, and everything will remain the same. Lisa Parshley will be the president, Ty Mensur representing Thurston County. We have vice president, and then Carolyn Cox, Lacey, will represent LOT on the Thurston Regional Planning Council. Lisa Parshley with Olympia will represent LOT on the Capitol Lake Deschutes Estuary Long-Term Management Project Executive Work Group. And I, Lieta Dahlhoff, with Tomwater, will be representing LOT on the Sea Level Rise. In addition, I had the Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force meeting regarding prevention, and we have come up with new goals for four strategies to expand resources, reduce stigma, work on safe medication return, and also work on safer storage options for opioids. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Jefferson?
Thank you, Mayor. I had three meetings since we last met. One was 8th February, Tomwater Hopes Coalition Meeting. I was voted co-chair of the leadership team, one of three individuals who worked with Georgia, our coalition coordinator, and Chris Hawkins at the Health Department. We worked on an action plan and goal number eight, which is improve family problems. My second meeting was the LEOFF Disability Board. We elected officers and they will remain the same, retain Rick Sapp, and elect Bob Brewer as vice chair. My third meeting was the EMSC meeting on 15th February. Now, the public overwhelmingly approved the Medic One levy in the spring of 2021. There is now an issue with the language that was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, the EMS Committee, Department of Revenue, and the Assessors Office. Due to an error, we were left with a $4.5 million deficit for this year, $5 million next year, and $6 million for the following year. We compared 36, 38 cents correction for 1,000 versus 30 cents for 1,000, and our calculation shows a $26 million loss over the term of the levy. The timeframe for us to drop below two months' cash flow in the budget starts in 2024. So we are okay for 2023. So bottom line, we must address this sooner rather than later in order for us to bring it back to the voters in a timely manner if needed. So here's the way ahead. We voted to appoint a committee to explore this in detail, ask questions, seek legal advice, opinions, and find out what our options are. We understand the urgency. That is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Snyder?
Mayor, can I ask Angela a question?
Yes.
Before you go to, thank you, Mayor. Angela, is there a way with your committee, you can add an element the next meeting regarding if the Regional Fire Authority passes in April, the implications of that, right, with Medic One, EMS? Please. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, great, thank you. Councilmember Snyder?
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, Councilmember Swarthout and myself will be meeting with Elisa Jones Wood to prepare for the upcoming Climate Action Steering Committee meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, February 27th. And I will also be attending the Public Works Meeting scheduled this Thursday at 8:00 a.m. Also, on February 8th, Mayor Sullivan visited Old Town Center for Coffee Hour prior to our senior lunch and addressed many of the questions and concerns our senior population have about our city and where we are headed. We will see, we will be seeing her next month, along with Fire Chief Hurley, and the senior council there is quite happy. Also, on February 16th, in honor of Black History Month, the Olympia Tomwater Foundation held a monthly presentation at Heritage Distilling Company with guest speaker Dr. Thelma Jackson. She discussed a book entitled Blacks in Thurston County, Washington, 1950 to 1975, a community album. Although her presentation was very enlightening and certainly an eye-opener, which stood out to me the most was when she mentioned how many, how when the city of Lacey was established, how many non-white people moved there because there wasn't any restrictions or barriers on who could purchase homes, what neighborhoods families could move into. Since our last meeting, the Tomwater Youth Program has held two Friday night events, and this past Friday event had 320 grade school students. As some of you may or may not know, TYP has been in existence for around 28 years, serving the youth in our community. Finally, I would like to thank Chuck Danny, Don Carney, city staff, and all those who worked many years and hours in helping to see to it that the park and the preserve becomes a reality. One of the things families look for when moving through a community is what parks and open spaces the city has, and Tomwater can be proud of our commitment to addressing those needs. Thank you, and that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Agabi?
So I only in person attended the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, and Lieta, Councilmember Lieta gave that report. On February 8th, I was supposed to attend a the public transportation meeting, committee meeting, but didn't make that on our stripper book. But I do have a summary of what took place at that meeting. And if it places to be, Councilmember, I can read that.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
So I received a summary of what happened at that meeting. I wasn't there in person, so. What do you think?
Yes, if you, if you're comfortable giving that report, that's fine, or you can send it to.
Or you can email it to us, Peter.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so. So tomorrow, I have an EDC board member meeting at the library here in Tomwater. That is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Althouser?
Thank you, Mayor. This past Wednesday on the 15th, I attended the Regional Housing Council along with Councilmember Kathy. I think there are three items that are worth reporting back on from that meeting. First, we discussed kind of the final version of the inter-local agreement, which was before us tonight, which we voted on in the consent calendar. So thank you, everyone, for your support of that, that agreement. It's critical that we have that structure in place for our next steps with the RHC. Second, we discussed for the third time a potential affordable housing development out over by the Co-op in Olympia. I've reported on this a couple of times now, and the ask before the Regional Housing Council is really sort of a letter of commitment that the Regional Housing Council will recommend and support funds for that project in the fall. But in order to satisfy the conditions of the State Housing Finance Commission, the developers of that project need a letter expressing that support in late February, early March. So the, after having multiple presentations about that, the council agreed to offer its support in the form of a letter for that project. Essentially, that project is 162 units of permanently affordable housing, and it needs essentially a local matching funds in order for that project to pencil out. That comes to about $2 million in local funds in order to leverage, I think, 16 million in credits and other funding that does not come from local sources. So in terms of dollars per units, that's, that's about as good of a, good of a deal as we're likely to see in the near future. That also spurred an additional conversation about what happens when projects of this kind that are exciting, that we want to support, what happens when those come to us out of cycle from the funding grant streams? And I think that are, I think that that's sort of a protracted conversation that we'll have future meetings discussing the process for how we consider those requests in the future. Because we want to get requests off-cycle that are exciting and that have potentially great benefits for the community. I think that the third thing that I would mention is that part of what came out of our retreat, maybe about six months or nine months ago for the board, was a desire to incorporate more lived experience and more service experience into the decision-making process within the, within the Regional Housing Council. And our first step at doing that, which was enshrined in the inter-local agreement that we passed, is to develop two advisory boards to the RHC. One is the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, and then second is the Homelessness Advisory Board. In those boards, we did an open public process for applications and got a vast array of applications from community members with lived experience with those issues, with service experience, just community members who read about it and who were interested. We were really impressed with the depth and level of applications we got for those positions. And the tech team, the technical team, I think, did a great job in narrowing down that set of applications into a final set for us to review further. So that process is, I think personally, very exciting so that we can build in that structure into our decision-making process so that we're more informed, so that we make more community-based decisions as we move forward as a council. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmembers for that.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I felt like the slacker here. I didn't have any meetings between, from the last council meeting. They start again. Mine are always towards the first of the month, but I will be going to the Climate Action Steering Committee meeting on Monday, and we do have our Public Works meeting on Thursday.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so do we have any other business? With that, I would like a motion to adjourn? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.